Good evening. Hello.
Hello.
Chase, the addendum amendment to our is a budget amendment, is that going to necessitate a vote?
Yes, sir. I'm hoping so. I'm hoping to get a vote today.
Okay.
This evening.
Ask, okay, you're gonna ask for the vote.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. This is like waiting for the last couple of minutes of a football game to end, you know, it takes a half an hour.
Yeah. Watching the pot, right?
Yep. There's Ladon.
Hey there. Good evening, Ron. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Evening. Hey, Chase.
Hi. Good evening.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, Patricia.
I'm hoping we don't go too long tonight. I have one of our last few Pippens games to get to.
What time does that start?
Uh, well, six thirty-five. So we'll see what happens. We only have two games left and then the playoffs, so.
So we have a goal, right?
I think we still have to get our playoff ticket.
Well, you guys better get yours. We've had ours for a while.
I know.
You just buy the first one and then depending what happens, we'll have if we'll see if we have another game in Yakima or not, so yeah.
Yep.
Playoffs are Sunday.
One. Wow.
Yeah, I know. It's like a fourth season shirt.
Have you heard, have you heard from, um, oh, shoot, forgot his name already?
No. Yeah.
Yeah, Noah.
The only thing he misses the cat. Our doofus cat took a real liking to Noah. He go down to Zoom all the time. He misses the cat. Thanks, Noah.
You don't hear that every day, Mayor.
No.
Good evening.
That's funny. So he's doing okay, though?
Yes, I think so he is.
Good.
I was gonna text him again, yeah.
Good. I think that was a good decision on his part to do that.
Well, I think the selling factor was that they set a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in escrow account for him to finish his college education when he gets done. He'll have years to do that and he's only got about a year and a half left, so yeah.
Yep.
That was pretty smart. Because he could be in the organization for six months or five years.
Right.
So for those who don't know and are listening to the conversation, one of our Pippens players this year who was in our home for most of the summer got drafted by the Florida Marlins, Miami Marlins, yeah. Yeah.
He'll be taking some trips to Florida, huh?
We'll see.
Hopefully in the next couple of years.
Yeah. We don't know where he's gonna end up because they have, you know, they have two or three others, you know, leading up teams, farm teams, so. Yeah, he'll have to work his way up the organization.
Well, we're, uh, where are we at? Five thirty?
Yes, sir.
Exactly. I'm gonna reset my watch to its lagging.
Well, I'm going to begin the meeting, even though we don't show everybody. I'm gonna call a meeting to order. And I'm gonna ask, uh, our COO, Ryan, to do introductions of guests and staff.
All right, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Dr. Sean Cleary, citizen representative. He won't be present tonight. Commissioner McKinney.
Present.
Commissioner Lindy.
I'm here.
Mayor Byers, city representative.
I am here.
Councilmember Duval, city representative.
Present.
Dr. Attaberry, citizen representative.
Present.
And Yakima Health District Staff, Andre Prescott, executive director.
Here.
Ryan Iback, myself, chief operating officer, Chase Porter, senior finance manager.
Here.
Melissa Sixberry, director of disease control.
Here.
Lilian Bravo, director of public health partnerships.
Evening, here.
Sean McGee, director of environmental health.
Here, good evening.
Nathan Johnson, local emergency response coordinator.
Here.
Dr. Neil Bard, health officer.
Here.
Victoria Reyes, administrative assistant. James Elliott, attorney.
Good evening.
Jocelyn Castillo, community health specialist.
Sure. Ryan, we also have Yasmin Barrios for YHD staff.
Okay, Yasmin Barrios, epidemiologist.
All right. And then we'll move on to the review of the submitted public written comments.
Okay, we do have thirty written comments that were submitted by the public and our attorney has reviewed them and highlighted the main points from each one, so I'll be summarizing or reading in these public comments. I will be reading five at a time and then Melissa Sixberry will also be helping me since there's so many. And at any, any time throughout the, the meeting tonight, board members or staff can, can address any of the comments. So the first one is from Jennifer Hines. As a parent, I'm really struggling to figure out the rules that Yakima County and Washington State, for that matter, are using to determine what's safe for our community, particularly when it comes to masking. I'm looking for specific data that has been used to make decisions, especially for our children. Could you please provide the data being used to make these decisions specifically regarding masking in schools? In short, I would really like to see the research and data that are driving our choices. Currently, YHD is placing additional restrictions over and above the CDC, DOH, and governor's office. Can, we can and must do better for our kids. They are our future and we have to do better for them. Forcing them to be masked in the classroom and on campus is not what is best for our kids. Please make it a family decision. Next one is from Jennifer Han. Like so many parents in this valley, I'm extremely bothered by the mask protocols forced on our kids in school. I fully support the social distancing procedures, temperature checks as follows. Schools have implemented into their daily routine, teaching children to practice what, what we teach in our homes, healthy hygiene. After nearly eighteen months into this, I think it's time we raise the question, if masks work, which effectively proven they do not, why continue to push the no choice method for families who wish to have their children attend school, school mask free? Bottom of the line, we deserve a choice. Our children deserve a choice. They deserve to be kids, to live freely, to attend schools in a clean, healthy environment and not feel pressured to do something they don't want to. The next one is from Tom Willgoes. Today's topic in schools is whether to mandate masks. The CDC, a couple of weeks ago, says yes. You would think that is based on science, but what if you were to know that no government agency has spent one dime on studying the question? Masking causes severe acne and other skin problems. The discover, the stuff for comfort of masks distracts some children from learning. And masks are a source of pathogens that they become moist and are used for too long. So what vaccine mandate am I in favor of? Who do I want teaching my nephew? A teacher who the CDC will potentially infect two students or one that will have a thousand times the viral load and infect five students? Think about my obvious mandate. The next one is a letter from, that's signed by sixty-three people, and so I'll name the sixty-three people and then read the, read the letter. So this is from Sherri Leaden, Dr. Gail Brewer, Dr. Niccolo Bosack, Roland Lilly, WJ, Dr. WJ Laverne, Dr. Richard Twist, Dr. Dwayne Monick, Dr. Timothy Melhorn, Dr. Jim Haven, Jennifer Woodkey, Addie Atkins Lodgeston, Kat Zapel, Kathy Piety Hale, Maria Jet, Betsy Hollandbaum Martin, Virginia Scanlon, Ray Yates, Sheila Treat, Laura Hahn, Kathy Turner Burnham, Wendy Still, Sandy Dahl, Cindy Dixon, Brenna Sum, Linda Wall, Gina Kearney, Cindy Potu Uhmoto, Jay Deo, Mindy Clark, Carrie Livingston, Peggy Steer, Lynn Mayer, Janice Vecio, Trixanna Cook, Toby Beeler, Mark Mitchell Rice, Jim Charles, Bridget Callahan Russell, Miranda Covey Cox, Amy Melkor, Elliot, Lisa Bailey, Brenda Collins, Linda Linaway, Dr. Robert Sutton, Wendy Lund Dosher, Dan Peters, Jamie Abenhouse, Julianne Moore, Amy Hostetler, Corey Hodge, Jack Lonfeld, Lori King Curtis, Leslie Charlton Hatton, Lizzie Lamb, Linda Hall, Gregorio Ochoa, Holly Barrett, Kelly Gavin Hatfield, Julie Harris Erickson, Spencer Shannon Hatton, Dr. Sam Booth, Leslie Hovland Van Geest, and Andrew Gerard. We, the undersigned, are providing one letter in respect of your time, yet hope it carries the weight of sixty-three individual letters. RCW seventy point oh five point oh six oh is a relatively short code that describes the powers and duties of local boards of health. Paraphrasing the code, the purpose of the board of the health is to preserve and advance public health, not advance opinions of a voting block, but to preserve and advance public health. Not to micromanage the exceptionally qualified health district employees, but to preserve and advance public health. Not to make motions that violate state rules, statutes, and, and emergency orders, but to preserve and advance public health. Not to serve as a platform to advance political aspirations, but to preserve and advance public health. We, the undersigned, are grateful for those members of the Yakima County Board who consistently abide by the powers and duties as described in RCW seventy point oh five point oh six oh, and respectfully request the others to do as well.
Brian, I just would like to comment about that letter and state that what's in the best interest for public health certainly appears to be subjective. So thank you for those sixty-three people, but I know that on my part, every action has been absolutely in the interest of public health.
Yeah, and many of these letters are subjective, and that seems to be a key phrase. The next one is Megan Mock. The governor of Washington State is off to, is off the chain with his emergency powers. No one else in the state is willing to go up against him. It's now only up to the people. School boards and superintents have received a threatening letter from OSPI and really seem that their hands are tied. This threatening letter is enclosed and is fully, is full of misleading information, lies, and threats. It's time for a peaceful non-compliance of citizens of, of Washington State. The bottom line is that governors' mask mandates are unscientific, unconstitutional, and unbiblical.
Hey, this one is from Carly Alman. At this point, it's clear the state of emergency is over and the mandates lockdowns and overreaching data needs to stop. The Yakima Health District is falling, feeling its responsibility to the community by continuing these weak and unjustified arbitrary mandates and rulings. It's time for the YHD to stand against the government, overreach, and do the right thing, which includes mass choice for schools. At what point does the YHD become less about the community's health and more, if not at all, about fulfilling the desires of the government? In my opinion, the YHD is all about the government's desires, not the communities. Please lift the mask mandates and allow parents to decide what is best for their children. The government doesn't know what is best for each child any more than I know what is right for your family. This is why choice is imperative. America is all about choice and the Yakima Valley is not stupid, which is what it seems the YHD believes of the community. We can make our own choices. We can weigh the possibilities, decide for ourselves what is best. Uh, this one is from Rick. I do not have a last name. Uh, the reason for this email is to make comments for the Wednesday Health Board discussion regarding mandatory face masks and mandatory vaccinations for COVID nineteen in Yakima County. In a free society, the reasons for such an action should clearly describe and substantiate it. Forcing people on pain and ostracism of other penalties to do things in which are contrary to one's health and to one's beliefs seem to be an activity bordering on the criminal. The only possible exception might be there is indisputable evidence in favor of such requirements, and then at most, those requirements should be brief. In this letter, I will attempt to demonstrate to you that there are data that is science, which clearly runs contrary to what some are wishing to mandate. Question, the board is discussing mandating a vaccine that we have no data on for more than two months. For the possible benefits of two months, you want the people of this county to be forced to take what is currently dangerous vaccination according to the US government data. But in closing, it appears to me that it is, it is incumbent on the leadership of the counties to reject the mandating of these vaccines without proving that they are safe and seriously effective, effective for a timeframe of more than two months. If the board, if the health board or any of its official members would like to pursue a discussion on these points, I would be happy, more than happy to be involved.
Melissa, I would just like to interject. I think you said it was Rick. That's Dr. Rick Wilkinson.
Okay, he didn't have his last name on there, thank you. Uh, from Jeremy Hines, no further, Jeremy Hines feels YHD must be uh, in the, in the business of hiding information regarding heat deaths as most were very elderly and had underlying health conditions, so as to use unfortunate evidence to advance their internal agendas. Uh, from Lisa Nann, please mask optional for private schools. And from Eric Halderson, I am writing to urge you to give parents the option to choose if their children shall wear a mask in school or not. I have an affidavit saying those here in town and who would benefit from wearing masks free.
All right, Brian Rill, the vaccine is a great tool to protect those who are at high risk and those who choose to take it for their own peace of mind. The delta that has been, that has been gathered over the last eighteen or the data that has been gathered over the last eighteen months is equally important. One very big part of the data is that, that kids, teens have little to no effect from COVID. This is great news and a bright spot that should be talked about. In fact, the data shows the seasonal flu is far more of a threat to youth than COVID. And it, time has come to put the choice of our children's health back in the hands of the parents where it belongs. Everyone who is at risk can get a vaccine for COVID anytime they choose and putting masks on kids isn't going to protect anything. The youth today faces far greater challenges than we ever had going through school. The youth today face greater challenges than we've ever had going through school with the, with the pressures of social media and constant time spent be, behind devices, cell phones, iPads, computers, our children's social skills aren't developing. Putting masks on kids during the few hours a day they have to interact, using conversations, seeing emotions and facial expressions holds development back even more. The negative effects of forcing kids into masks is far greater than any benefit would have on protecting them from the virus that doesn't harm them. My hope is that the health board will make the right decision and let the parents decide what's best for their children. John Rill. I am deeply concerned that my grandchildren will be forced to wear masks again for the upcoming school year. We have spent the last year and a half neglecting children in the name of saving grandparents. I am writing to tell you it's time to give children back their lives while allowing their families to decide what is best for them. I do not want my grandchildren or any other child forced to spend another school year in masks in order to save me. Let's allow children and families to live their lives again and give them the freedom they choose. Next one is from Auntie of one of your students. The mama bears from the state of Iowa have been able to ban masks for the kids as masks have caused staph infections along with the killing of lungs. Masks are submission to the CDC propaganda. Don't accept this. Mask wearing needs to be our freedom of choice. Tasha Gronig. As a parent of three children, I am bothered and upset with the thought of my kids being masked in school. While we support hand hygiene practices, temperature checks, and desks three feet apart, we believe it is within the rights of individual families to choose whether or not their children should wear masks. At this point, the vaccine is so readily available to those who wish to receive. Children are not the risk. It has already been proven time and time again that they are not in this, there's not an issue when it comes to COVID. Children do not readily wear SARS-CoV-2 spread it to other children or teachers or endanger parents or others at home. This is the, the settled science. Masking can do positive harm to children as it can to some adults, but the cost benefit analysis entirely different for adults and, and children, particularly the younger children. Whenever argument there may be for, for consenting adults, children should not be required to wear masks to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen. Of course, zero risk is not attainable with or without masks, vaccines, therapeutics, distancing, or other, or anything else medicine may develop or government agencies may impose. They do nothing beneficial for youth, community, and are deeply hindering their learning and mental health. The year in a child's life is a substantial development period, and we cannot continue to disregard their cries for help. Mental health issues are on the rise and we need to put an end to it. On behalf of the children of Yakima County, thank you in advance for your help in advocating for mass choice in school during the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Heidi Johnson, I am a seventy-five-year-old grandmother of four, and I am deeply concerned that my grandchildren will be wearing masks again in the coming school year. Our state has spent the last sixteen months neglecting our youngsters in the name of saving grandma. They have missed school, sports, graduations, birthday parties, and countless other joyful experiences. I am here to tell you that it's time to give those youngsters their joy and freedom back by allowing families to decide whether their children will wear a mask at school. I don't want my grandchildren or any other child spending another minute in a mask in order to save me. I am vaccinated. Instead, let's allow them to live their lives again by giving them their freedom of choice.
This is from Craig Groening. I am a sixty-two-year-old grandpa. I have eight grandkids, and I am deeply concerned that all my grandkids will be wearing masks again, or even worse, on Zoom. The kids already gave up sixteen months missing birthdays by listening to our state mandate. We did what you asked us to do. This needs to stop taking our freedom to be free and be free. We had churches closed down. Enough is enough. We want freedom. Haley Halverson, we are tired of the mandates. We are tired of the requirements. The center of our children's day at school should be focused on our academics, not whether or not their mask is covering their nose properly. Every parent should have the right to choose if their child wears a mask or not. This is not the responsibility of the school or state to choose. Child deaths and sicknesses are still very rare when it comes to COVID nineteen. All the parents that I have personally known to have COVID, none of their children, who they were quarantined at home with contracted the disease. We all want school to feel normal again for our children. We want them to be able to read books aloud in class unmuffled, to be able to smile or make silly faces across the classroom to a friend. Please, I urge you to let the parents have the choice. Jason Jordan, as a parent of two young boys, thirteen and fifteen, who have already had COVID, we, the parents, will not be requiring them to wear masks in school. If this means they are not allowed to go to school, then so be it. We will not be masked and controlled by the system again. Ever furthermore, it's ridiculous that even though masks have proven to be nothing more than false sense of security, they are still used as a false symbol of compliance and safety, when in reality, they are nothing more than a misery to our youth who no longer get to see the smiling faces of their peers. Julie Halverson, it is a great concern to me that the school board is mandating, mandating wearing masks for school age children. Facial recognition, social and emotional development are very important for children that have a mask on are hindering that development. My nephew attends St. Joe's, and it is important to me that he grows up with all the advanced advantages, including both social and emotional skills to become a successful adult. Besides home, I rely on his education to help with that. I feel that his education is compromised when he is distracted by these masks. It has also been shown in the data that, from the CDC, that numbers are down even with adults are very circulating. While the virus may be more virulent in adults, the hospital rates amongst children are actually going down. It is my opinion that parents should have the choice to have their children wear masks, but not mandatory. Um, from Kelly Ellen, we know that, we now know that COVID virus, much like the seasonal flu, will never be fully eradicated. So what is the endgame? What mandate comes next? Because at some point, the governor's emergency powers, it will be, are going to negatively impact us, every citizen in the state. What are we trying to save and to what extent are we willing to sacrifice our children in the process? The freedom, loving parents and citizens of Yakima County aren't going to stand by and watch our local government cower to, to the propaganda when our children are at stake. I implore this help, I implore this help board to stand up for our youth and to send data and say a message that our children deserve better.
Kristen Habrick, I am writing to you all today to express not only mine, but many others' concerns on the mask mandate in schools. We're all aware that this virus has a ninety-eight percent recovery rate. Parents should have the final decision over their children, not the CDC, not the health district, not the government. This is unconstitutional. We cannot continue to live in fear and allow government control any longer, because if we keep allowing it, at what point does it end? All parents should get to choose for themselves and their children what is best. The parent wants their child masked, great. That is their choice. If not, because we have also read the science, then great. That is their choice. When the CDC even expressed that children should no longer be required to wear masks, but then the state wants to threaten to take away funding, this is no longer free society. Do the right thing, the constitutional thing, the American thing. Let us have the freedom to choose. Mary Spencer, as a citizen of the United States, a parent and teacher, we need to have our voices heard on what is best for our children. Mask should be a choice that is made by the individual, not mandated by anyone else. We should have the right to make choices that we believe are best for ourselves and our families. Freedom of choice, my body, my choice. Brooke Real Barnes, as a parent of two school age children, I am very concerned for possible continuation of forcing, forced masking of students in the classroom. I'm advocating for parents to be free to make the health decision they believe are best for their children. We are a community full of capable parents who can make their, our own risk assessment. After all, prior to twenty twenty, we were trusted to do this for our children's entire lives. On behalf of the children in Yakima County, thank you in advance for helping and advocating for mass choice in school during the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Lindsay Rill, I am emailing you in regard to mask mandates for our children returning to school. I strongly believe that it is a decision families should make for themselves. I respect others who choose to send their children in masks this returning year, but it's time to let us decide what is best for our kids. This needs to end now. Stop the dividing of all our community over this. Thank you in advance for mass, making these positive changes. And the last one is anonymous. Good afternoon. I am writing in regards to the current COVID vaccine mandate in Washington State. I currently work in a long-term care facility and fall into
I currently work in a long-term care facility and fall under the new mandate. I'm primary, I'm the primary financial support in my home and lose my job since I have chosen not to take the COVID vaccine for religious as well as personal health reasons as decided by me and my doctor. I do not feel that the government should have any say in how I take care of my body. I routinely see my doctor primary, I routinely see my primary care doctor for wellness checks and base my health decisions upon those conversations. And then that I may might get a vaccine that there's limited research behind goes against my personal freedoms. I make sure that I do my part by staying home and I'm not well using proper hand hygiene and so many other factors that have kept me and my family healthy for the last eighteen months. Even after multiple exposure, do my do my total work, not to mention others who choose not to give backs the vaccine and how that can affect the overall health of the community. I'm getting ready to have a child in a few weeks and how short-staffed will hospitals be when the time comes for me to have my child be a C-section this fall due to this mandate? How is that a benefit for public health?
Janet Study, please advocate for health freedom and autonomy and advise our school districts to allow parents to have the choice of whether or not they wish to have their children wear masks in school. I know you have read all the arguments regarding the efficacy of masks and preventing viral spread, so I will not really read the point. Regardless, I believe that the issue of even greater importance is preserving our freedoms to make health choices for ourselves and our children. If we lose this most basic freedom, we will eventually lose them all. Please advise school boards to follow these tried and true guidelines to help prevent spread of illness. Encourage frequent hand washing, cover cough and sneezes by coughing into elbow. Stay home and sick and encourage good sleep, eating and exercise habits. From Alice Wiles, Alice at McWiles. Our daughter is five years old and is faced with the possible continuation of wearing masks in the classroom again this upcoming school year. We are reasonable and logical people and are in support of thorough sanitation practices and understand the reasoning behind temperature checks. However, we believe we should be able to choose whether or not our children wear masks at school. This should be a choice that each individual has the right to make. COVID-19 vaccines are readily available for anyone twelve and over. And as of August tenth, seventy point seven percent of those eligible in our state have received at least one dose. We have had the opportunity to get the vaccine ourselves and are aware of our risks with or without it. We feel like we should be able to make the decision for our children on whether or not we, she should have to wear a mask at school. Our children rely on us as parents to make crucial decisions for them and advocate for their health and rights. We believe that forced masking in school is taking away our rights as parents. We are just asking for the choice. Please give us the choice that is best for our children. From Valerie Kizler, Kiziar. I have lived in Yakima Valley my entire life and now have had two school aged children. I'm incredibly concerned with new mask mandates that may be implemented into the 2021 2022 school year. All parents of school age children have experienced the negative side effects of mask mandates, including lack of verbal skills and the ability to recognize facial expressions, loneliness, fear, slow communication, not to mention contamination of masks that allow for bacteria, parasites and fungi. In our home, we teach what is right for you may not be right for me and what is right for me may not be right for you. What is not right is for either to be stripped of the freedom to choose what is right for ourselves and our children. I am advocating that parents have the right to choose to mask or not mask. From Bobby Obermeyer, mask choice needs to be front and center when it comes to our children. If the choice is taken away for the parents, then the health district as well as school systems need to address how they will combat the negative psychological effects for mask wearing in our children. And the health, if the health district believes that there are negative psychological effects for mask wearing in our children, then tell us specifically how it's healthy for our children to wear a mask for hours at a time. The health district as well as all the schools need to produce for parents the evidence, actual data-driven evidence of the positive effects of psychological health that masks provide. If the freedom of choice is stripped from parents, what protections will put in place to protect children from potential bureaucratic bullying for school staff when it comes to mask enforcement? If such masks aren't used one hundred percent correctly by the children. And the last one is from Jody Phelps. Brian, if possible, I would like this asked at the next meeting or possibly addressed. What is a shot? Why is the shot called a vaccine? A vaccine, according to a local doctor, is defined as to provide immunity to a virus, protect recipients from getting the virus, reduce death, infection, circulation and transmission of the virus. This so-called vaccine does not fit that description. It may lessen some symptoms, but a regular flu shot can do that. I personally know several people who have gotten the shot who now have COVID with varying degrees of symptoms.
Thank you, Melissa and Ryan. Appreciate it. I will now move on to unfinished business.
May I speak, please? This is your buyers. I just wanted to say something at this point. So I took the time this afternoon, took me probably an hour and a half to read through all of those letters myself in full. And I know that we reserve the right to summarize them, but most of letters that were read, I think, are, we would all agree, are subjective in their point of view. However, there were two in which there was information omitted that I thought could be helpful. One was the the person who said this is, this is not according to our constitution and they specifically cited the constitutional mandate for for rights and freedom. I think that's an important piece. The other is that I read the the lengthy email by Dr., I think Commissioner McKinney, you said it was Dr. Rick.
Four pages and it was.
Yes, thank you. And and what I'm concerned about is that the body of of his email, which talked about accurate objective information and data in which he said, you know, if he is wrong, he's open to hearing a different opinion or somebody to show him that. But none of that was shared. So it seems to me like we're hearing a lot of subjective and not a lot of the objective data that comes in in the letter. So I just wanted to point that out. The other thing is I need to know, are these letters available for if people want to read them in full? Are they available on the website?
Mayor Byers, good evening. I wanted to share that we we wanted to address these concerns. We spent a very long time at our last meeting sharing public comments. So as part of new business, we wanted to have a discussion regarding public comments so the board could address these issues. I do want to share and Ryan or James, please feel free to chime in, but we do send these comments to public comments to James Elliott for review. So that's how we receive our direction. We do have pressing issues to discuss in these meetings and so the the question of how much time we spend on this is one of the priorities that we were hoping to discuss on any business.
Yeah, and I do appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Fresco. And I'm aware of that. I just want the public to have an opportunity to have to have full exposure to the content if they choose to do that. So, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may add, as you asked last time, you wanted to have a discussion at this meeting. It's listed as one of our agenda items for today. And there was a four or five page email from Dr. Wilkinson. I didn't feel I could do it justice trying to pick out the science and data, et cetera. So I'm glad to hear Ryan sent all, every single one of these written comments were sent in their original form to every board member. We hadn't done that before, but if that's something the board wants us to do, I just felt like with all that's going on, send it all. I wanted people the opportunity to have their voices heard. But this board can give direction on what you want to have done. And by by no means was I trying to particularly limit any person's comments or statements. That's why I wanted every board member to see everything that was written for tonight. So.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I'm ready to move on. I just wanted to talk my thoughts on that.
Well, Commissioner Anderson, if I could interject, I did. I just want to say, I give a thank you to Ryan for sending out those letters. I was able to read through them this afternoon and it is, it is nice to have them in advance of the meeting. Well, thank you.
All right. Any any other comments?
Just to say thank you to everyone who took the time to write a letter or an email to the to the Board of Health. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Now we'll move on to unfinished business. Under A is a budget amendment and Chase Porter.
Good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen real quickly. I'm hoping to, we presented the the budget amendment last, last time, last Board of Health meeting. I'm hoping that the board is comfortable enough to take a vote upon that tonight. I'm going to go through a review of what we talked about last, last meeting and address some questions. I have some specific questions about this. And then we'll go from there. That's okay. So this is our, so right now through June twenty twenty one, our year-to-date expense is about five point seven million dollars.
Can you hear me? Sorry. Are we, can we make it bigger? Please. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome. Is that, does that look better now?
Much better.
Okay, you, yes, thank you. What I'm seeing is probably a little bit different than you. I got a nice big computer screen and some of y'all are probably on laptops and those kind of things. So our current actual year-to-date expense is five point seven million dollars. Our actual adopted budget at this point in time is seven point five million. So looking at a projected expense of fourteen point five million. So a little bit detailed behind that is our operating expense, eleven point five, and that's June. So that's more or less times two of this number because we're just pulling the rest of the year forward. Looking, but also looking forward to the rest of the year. We're hoping to have some mobile vaccination units to travel up and down the valley and then a contingency budget. We, what I would like to do is not necessarily spend time on these meetings on talking about budget items. We have a lot to talk about, a lot to discuss. Last year, we had bought and adopted, adopted an additional two million dollars and we ended up not using that at all. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a buffer, so to speak. So that we don't necessarily might have to do this again in November, December. When we're thinking about twenty twenty two, we're not trying to get through the rest of twenty twenty one. So that's my, my, my thinking or my reasoning behind these figures. And so with that, with a fourteen point five million dollar projected expense, we have, we have a budget of shortfall of approximately seven million dollars. Any questions so far? All right. Just before you move forward, hang on. So, okay, projected shortfall of nearly seven million dollars, but just below that on the page, you are showing revenue sources to cover the entire fourteen and a half million. So is that, is that funding safe or secure or promised? Yes, yes, we are not spending the money unless we have the corresponding funding. This is not an ask to spend additional reserve dollars. This is not an ask to spend flexible dollars. These are all programs and things that we expect to fund through FEMA, federal or Department of Health or in operating expenses, you got to take into account there's environmental health and we have fees for environmental health programs.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the summary? Okay, so just a little bit more detail. I'm gonna zoom out slightly here. Does that look okay? I'm speaking, maybe this is not helpful. Okay. I'm speaking more towards this column here. I just kind of as that seven million dollars, this is how we kind of expect that to break down. Additional staff time, additional advertising, the My Strength App, professional services and our test sites is what we're expecting to be somehow, excuse me, high, high costs. And then also operating, operating leases. Doctor Atterbury, I believe you had a question about this two hundred and five thousand. So I've worked up kind of what that would be. Right now, we have taken on additional for for staff, just for internal purposes, just to meet the workload. We have a communication specialist and epidemiologist, public politician and accounting tech. The total compensation, that salaries and benefits included. So with those salaries and benefits at six months of those. And then right now our public health officer, because we have, because for insurance purposes, we're hiring our our public health officer on as an employee. So that's showing up in the salaries and benefits. Do you have any additional questions about that, Doctor Atterbury?
No, I don't.
Okay, good. Is there any other questions, salaries and benefits? The one else I just kind of wanted to visit mostly is the, is an additional five point six million for professional services other. This is kind of what we're looking at. We're looking at these are our vendors, the purpose and and kind of a description, a little bit of a background of what of what they do for us. Can you guys see that? Okay.
Can you make it bigger, Chase, please?
Slightly here. Is that better?
Yes, thank, no.
Thank you.
Okay. So EMS is express employment. They do a lot of our CICT in the valley. That's a case investment, invest, excuse me, case investigation, contact tracing. And their workload goes up and down depending on, you know, the needs of the valley, you know, if there's more cases, they're going to be working more. If there's less cases, they'll be working less. Starplex Corporation is much of our security. They they operate at Sunnyside and Yakima. That's CMS. We're hoping to have, just in case, where we are actually are building in some spots for if we do have to have an additional vaccination site, certainly not hoping for those kind of things, but just in case. The other one was Yakima Valley Memorial and Columbia Safety. There are professionals, there are highly skilled service contractors that are, you know, they're the ones giving the shots. They're the ones that have been medically trained and all those kind of things. And so they would be running our mobile vaccination. And then the Starplex and all those other, those things, there's also, as you guys have visited test sites, you know, there's got to be parking and traffic and gate supervisors and all that. So there's quite a few different different employees and different, different things that make up that. This is also where I continue.
Chase, I have a question and maybe this is, I know that you're putting the numbers together, but just as a matter of policy, I'm wondering, you know, looking at the numbers, we have anywhere between, you know, forty and, you know, maybe a hundred people a day getting vaccinated in Yakima County and is it? I understand it's FEMA dollars, but to be good stewards of the money, I'm just, I just, I have to question whether or not we're being good stewards of the dollars to spend that much money. You know, per capita, that's a lot of money per shot when we have frickin' water places that are able to have the shot. In fact, I think we just noticed this week, we wasted over another five hundred doses of self-reported wastage in the community. So we're, we're spending all this money, albeit federal dollars, which still comes out of all of our pockets to have these pop-up sites when we have people who have the vaccine on ice needing to go in arms before they have to destroy it. And the appointments aren't there. Perhaps we already have the infrastructure at this point to successfully administer the shots to those folks who need it on a daily basis within the existing health system.
Commissioner McKinney, I'd like to address that if you don't mind. We have what is referred to as a high social vulnerability index community.
I'm familiar with that and thankfully that's why we were able to get FEMA to come in and have twenty thousand doses on ice. So I'm very grateful for that. Grateful that we were able to get the help we needed from the federal government.
Yes, and one of the things that you were supportive of and recognized was our work with mobile vaccination teams allowed us to reach vulnerable communities that traditionally have, regardless of the good intentions of clinics, have not necessarily felt controversial or felt that they could be served within those clinic systems. So again, what what you're seeing is a large investment, admittedly, to ensure that people who are working essentially essential business folks and people who are living in smaller communities have access to services that they would not ordinarily. So our concern is that if we were not conducting these initiatives, those people would not have access to those services.
Thank you for bringing that up and I appreciate it because you know I fully supported that and I think that is why we have such an incredible vaccine saturation across our ethnicity demographics relative to our our demographics for population for ethnicity. But but we still need to to reflect and look at what the cost is. And when we were able to do hundreds and hundreds of shots a day in the very beginning with those mobile pop-ups, I think it made sense. But I do think that it warrants the question, at what point do we say that we're spending too much money for not enough shots in arms? So are we able to articulate from, is there a benchmark from the Department of Health for the state of Washington as far as cost for services per shot to get it? Are we, is it simply? My concern is only that when we have these federal dollars, it's easy to spend it because it's not ours, but it really is ours. We have to be good stewards of these dollars. And I want to make sure that we're, we're being very pragmatic about whether or not it makes sense at this point to spend this much money when we have vaccine opportunities available to the public. Perhaps we can partner instead and having those clinics provide those vaccine pop-up opportunities rather than having another service provider that we are spending money on to have all the things that Chase was talking about. We got to, we got to do all the infrastructure. Well, the infrastructure already exists. We've got great folks working in our medical community locally. Why do we need to have UW Medical Center come over for these things? I'm just wondering if we can work smarter with our dollars.
Well, and I wonder, ma'am, if it's, if it's comfortable for you that we allow Chase to finish the presentation. And what I'd like to actually have is Ryan and Nathan discuss some of the changes that we made to be, as you said, as you said, thoughtful about the the expense because we have reduced certain services reflecting that the the expectation for services was reducing for many people. And so we have dramatically changed that, that there are some changes that are happening locally that that I think are necessary to share. And also, in fairness, the reason that we're asking for the budget amendment is to ensure that if we have dramatic increases, we're able to spend dollars wisely within the allowable budget that has been approved by the board. So I think Ryan can certainly share some of those changes. But I'm 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 hoping that maybe we could wait till the end so that it would be clear why Chase is asking for these things.
Absolutely, if that's coming, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Well, yeah, we were actually getting close to very near to the end of this presentation. As you can see, these are budget figures so that if, you know, if we have the funding is available and if if we move the for move forward with these activities, the budget's there. So we don't have to come back in November and talk about opening up the budget, adding more in if we want to start up mobile vaccinations because areas like Mapton have gotten really sick. You know, so it's just Yakima Valley is really diverse and very, very spread out. And, you know, Commissioner Kenny McKinney, that is really the million dollar question, right? At what point in time does this become just ineffective, inefficient? We really, I think a lot of us on the staff certainly don't believe we're certainly at that point yet. There's a lot of people out there that we can serve and a lot of people that don't have a car that can go from Mapton to even Sunnyside, right? That's still a good half hour drive or twenty minute drive. I know I make that drive. So this is what it is. And 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 McKinney, that's Commissioner McKinney, that is definitely something that we're probably not, we might not be able to give you that answer. And I'm not sure if that's going to be like a answer that we're going to have, you know, anytime soon. Because it is, it is across the nation. And and I will point out that this is federal dollars that is being spent sent to FEMA. If we're not using that money to help our community, somebody else is going to use that money to help their community. So it's available to us. And my goal here tonight isn't to really figure out if we should do it or not. My goal is to make sure that if you, if we want to do it, if the board wants to do it, if the health district wants to move forward on it, that the budget's there for that, that we don't have to come back to this and have the same discussion for for that. If we want to, don't want to move forward, something we could do that, too.
Yeah, if I can, if I can add to that, we we do watch it closely. And at one point, we had six mobile teams. And because the demand was down, we we did downsize to six, started to mobile teams.
The calculated, if you have the data to, what is the calculated cost per shot right now?
I don't think we have that information.
Yeah, that's, that would be, I'm sorry, that'd be really hard. I guess you could take, you say our number, the number of shots given in Yakima Valley divided by our costs, that could give you an expense, right? But we don't have the full picture on that, right? Because a lot of our costs didn't come through us. There was a lot of the State Park went all through Department of Health, right? And that was a very large expense for them.
Director Fresco, you just, you mentioned just before Chase spoke again about how you you've realized it and that you you know that, you know, eventually you're going to get there. And so what what is that? Can you articulate to me where you would say that we don't, this is not cost effective anymore?
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you. And I did want to address, as Ryan indicated, we went from six teams to two teams. We do feel that there's a need for having presence in the valley for those who don't have access. That's critical. But we have been looking at the numbers and they were reducing. You mentioned the University of Washington. One of the reasons that we've partnered with them is that they're willing to pay for testing. And so that means that we are not paying. And so we are using University of Washington funds for that. That's again, a partnership that allows Signal Health to continue to do good work on our behalf, but it is a cost reduction. We have continually had conversations weekly about concerns that if teams are not reaching the communities they need, they need to do so. And if not, we won't have those teams. One of the beauties of the contracts we have and the partnerships with these subcontractors is that we can reduce and expand at will. One of the reasons that's so important for us is that we don't know what the future holds. And if, in fact, there are a need for more shots given, we want to make certain that we have access, one, to funds, two, that it's a part of an amended budget, and three, that we have the contractors to do it. So as an example, if we were to have a booster shot available for people and there were many people in our valley who wish to receive it, we want to have access to the funding and the partnerships that allow us to expand at will. So we have reduced dramatically the size and the cost of this initiative. We're still looking for support from the federal and state government. We are aware that it's taxpayer dollars, whether it's federal, state or local. But we are looking also for the flexibility and the support from the board tonight to ensure that we live within the budget that's adopted. One of the issues that is being raised is that there has been so much money spent. And by the way, this does not include the millions and millions of dollars that was directly spent by FEMA to support those FEMA vaccine sites. It would have been a dramatically increased number had we done so. So the reason that we're asking for the amendment is not to spend money at will. It's to have the flexibility with an adopted budget to ensure that we have the ability to ramp up the needs. Because admittedly, we feel that the presence of of COVID continues in our community. And I see Nathan's hand, Nathan, if you wish.
Well, maybe Nathan, when did you move from six to two? When was that decision made?
We did that August, starting August first. We moved from sixteen to two teams. Couple of things I want to point out on on this spreadsheet, though, is column nine is the only line for vaccines specifically. The rest also included testing. And testing, for example, we continue to see an increase, as I mentioned in our last board meeting. Believe it was like the first week of June, our Yakima site did right around a hundred and fifty tests. By late July, they were doing over five hundred a week. And that's not because we scaled up any. That's because the community ended up coming more and more as more people were falling ill. So I think that that's an important thing is that column or row nine is the only vaccine and it supports the the two to three that we have right now. The rest is is testing. And even though we do have U Dub helping us out, we're also experiencing a exhausted healthcare system where they don't have the resources to staff up for large vaccine clinics or testing clinics because they're either they have sick staff or they have burnout or they, you know, this is our way to make sure we have the budget there to provide a service if that service is needed. But again, the only thing we're going to be continuing right now that will be, again, being paid for through FEMA is those two mobile vaccine clinics. Everything else on that list is for potential if the the need arises.
And Chase, I wonder if you could go back to the the original screenshot of your, no, the smaller one that shows our projected budget. And then, thank you so much. So the reason I wanted to share this with you is that, again, by state law, the board approves our budget for the year. Our approved budget was seven point five million. Regardless of of whether we end up spending upwards of fourteen million, we are going to get to a point where we don't run out of money because we do have banked revenue, but we we run out of the operating room within our budget. And that's the budget that's been approved. So the reason that we're asking for you to allow us to amend our budget, and this is something, by the way, that we've mentioned repeatedly, the goal is to ensure the ability to serve the community whether we ramp up or not. Because again, we are not looking to spend local dollars. And as an example, as was mentioned, we asked the board last year to include two million dollars. We didn't actually spend that money from our reserves. The money that we spent was coming from the federal and state government. So again, we're trying to be very thoughtful about money. We're looking for partnerships that allow us to reduce the cost to the taxpayer. But we do still feel very strongly that there's a need in our community, both for testing for case investigation, which which allows people to call people who become infected so we can ensure that they're safe. And also to allow for the for what is unknown. Because again, if there are booster shots or if we have a dramatic rise in cases or hopefully not deaths, we want to make certain that we have the resources and abilities to respond to that need.
So Andre, something that will come is administrative cost. And under the last slide you had up there, under Yakima Valley Memorial Hospital, you had something listed called Senior Director. What in the world is that person doing and what role do they play? I can see lots of MAs, I can see lots of nurses, I can see lots of BSCs. What is the senior director doing at Memorial? And what's the budget line item for that? Administrative cost, we have to be extremely cautious of because they don't redundant.
The the director position, Chase, if you could flip to that page real quick. Those director positions are essentially onsite management. They're the ones that are ensuring that all the staff are getting their breaks, that they're putting in their time cards, that invoices are coming back to the health district. All those administrative duties for that site are being done. That's not necessarily a director within the memorial system. That that's that onsite management overseeing that site.
It seems redundant, but.
Yeah, unfortunately, if there's administration cost connected with just about everything, unfortunately.
Yeah, that's what we should try and curb.
I think administration is like, there's a lot of us, right? Andre, myself, Brian would all be considered administration.
Commissioner McKinney, I think you had a question.
Yeah, well, and it's more because you've mentioned it twice now, I believe. And so it's it's left me a bit curious because you you very casually mentioned the possible need for booster shots. And so I just wonder if you could expand on that quickly. You mentioned it so casually and and from what I've read, are you are you privy to information that we don't know yet as far as what conversations are happening at the Department of Health level in Washington State that we are going to be soon recommending booster shots for vaccination?
Point of order. The questions by Commissioner McKinney are not germane to the report right now. Can we please get back to the report at hand for an agenda item number one?
Well, I'm in honor of both of your questions to me, I'm happy to address that. But if if we could remain on point on the issue of the of the amended budget, and then I'm happy to answer your your question, Commissioner McKinney.
The point of order is that Commissioner Anderson, would you please rule on the point of order that you supported or you do not?
Yes, we let's get back to the to the topic at hand here, and that is the addendum.
Is there any further questions?
Motion to approve the budget amendment as presented.
I'll second that.
It moved and seconded to approve the budget as presented. Ryan, would you please take the poll?
Comment?
Discussing.
Then, oh, excuse me, any discussion?
I would say that given this is such a complex moving target and knowing that we just now moved from six to two and given we don't know what's going to be happening, whether or not we're going to be downsizing or upsizing depending upon what Director Fresco says, I am just wondering if it makes more sense to to approve this through for the next couple of months and see where we are. Certainly, it's not that difficult for the board to re-review perhaps at the end of October to see where things are at. My suggestion.
The motion is, or a comment has been made about extending it or appropriate it for two months, was it?
I didn't make a motion, it was just a comment.
No, a comment, yes.
In further discussion on that, that's my my comment would be in favor of of reapproval for just a couple of months to see where we're at. So we can, this is very interesting. We haven't gotten in that this much in-depth conversation about what we're paying for. And I think it's actually been very beneficial to understand it. And I I think the board is capable of being nimble and being able to listen to this in two months.
Well, I would just like to speak in favor of the motion. As stated by Mr. Porter, we do have a contingency. And this budget amendment that we are doing is so that we can continue our services. So I think that is important to do. So that's why I support this motion.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Ryan, would you please take a rule?
Yes, if you're in favor of the amended budget, please state, say yes. If not, please state no. Commissioner McKinney.
Commissioner McKinney, we can't hear you.
No.
Commissioner Lindy.
Sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Mayor Byers?
Yes.
Councilmember DeWalt?
Yes.
Doctor Atterbury?
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
The vote is in favor. Five to one. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you all, thank you, Chase.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to unfinished business, item two, or excuse me, item B. Motion, the Board of Health to direct staff to support all school direct districts who provide a plan for approval to return in school for the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty-two school year with masks being a voluntary layer of protection that students and staff can make, not mandatory. Commissioner McKinney.
First, would it be appropriate then to have Director Fresco discuss the booster topic maybe after this? Or whichever Director Fresco you you prefer?
I defer to Commissioner Anderson.
Could you state that again, please, Commissioner? I can barely hear you.
But Director Fresco had said that he would be happy to answer and clarify the booster shot, the potential of a booster shot. And he he indicated that he was going to do that after we had the vote on the financials.
Okay. If you would like to do that at this time, Director, that would be fine with me.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner McKinney, you said I was casual about a third booster. I don't feel casual, I'm prepared and I'm calm, but I'm far from casual. We have heard that there may be the potential need or expectation of a booster. That's not something that is, I'm privy to from the State Department of Health. I've had no conversations that I haven't shared. But what I'm reading about nationally is that we, in many ways, felt in this country that we would be through COVID. The reality is that we have far less citizens in this country taking the vaccine. And so there is now dramatically increased spread. The other concern is that we have a a disease that is mutating. And so these variants are now far, far easier to catch. They're far easier to spread. So there has been general discussion about a booster. I don't know when that would happen. The only thing that I have been told is that potentially the first targeted group would be those over the age of sixty-five because of their vulnerability. I'm happy to defer to Dr. Bard. But I'm sharing with you that if, in fact, there is a need for an additional booster or if we have many of our community who have chosen not to be vaccinated, if they suddenly begin to want to be vaccinated, we want to be prepared for that. So this is about preparation, it's not about firsthand knowledge.
I could jump in. So there's two reasons to get a booster. One is because the immunity wanes and it's expected that it will. They just not know how long it'll take. And the other reason is to accommodate mutants. So with the technology we have, if new proteins emerge, a redesigned vaccine could easily be constructed. And then while it's called a booster, it's really an additional vaccine to what we've already had. And that may happen multiple times in the next ten to fifteen years as it has with flu.
I I appreciate your clarifying that. And so it does seem to me that we are perhaps considering an outlook that includes constant COVID vaccinations and boosters. Am I understanding that, Dr. Bard, that that's your expectation is that we will continue to see COVID vaccine and their boosters?
That will have to be proven as more data comes in. You know, they've been expanding the number of months that the current vaccines confer immunity, but it's not uniform across the population. For instance, if you're over sixty-five, your immunity is not going to last as long as if you're twenty-five. So there's other issues, it's still evolving, and as Andre said, it's a possibility.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner McKinney, did you want to make further comment on the, on the motion?
Uh, yeah, so I believe, uh, you know, this is something that we were kind of running short on time. And, uh, I think that, you know, this is something that would be really silly to pretend that we're the only ones talking about it at the Yakima Health District. This is clearly something that school boards and health boards, uh, across Washington State and across the nation are talking about. So we are not unique, uh, in this, uh, discussion. Uh, and, and, you know, I've had a lot of conversations with people who say that they wish that it wasn't political. Uh, but we have by nature of who's making the decision, a political decision. So because we still live in Washington State where we are in an emergency order whereby one elected official makes the decisions for over seven million people and he being a politically elected person, this is a political decision. And we are seeing governors, uh, across the United States who are handling this quite differently. They've handed the, the mandates differently, uh, they've handled shutdowns differently. Uh, and I, I hearing especially now that we're, we're getting, uh, continued evolving science about the requirements for booster shots, uh, knowing that this is something that we are going to have to live with going forward. It seems to me that we must return to personal choice in how you are going to choose to live your life. And I think, Dr. Bard, you commented ten to fifteen years. And if I'm considering the next ten to fifteen years of my child's life, uh, being a senior in high school and the youngest entering third grade, I most certainly believe that I as a parent should be the one to decide what their daily health decisions are, most especially with regard to anything that's going to be put in them or put on them. Uh, I know I'm not the only one who's passionate about this with children on both sides. And I have to say, I absolutely have the highest respect for every parent who makes a decision that is different than mine. And that is the point. You get to decide what is best for your child, I decide what's best for my child. And Governor Inslee does not know my child and he doesn't know your child. It is a political decision and the most apolitical decision that we can do is remove politics and make it personal choice. So I look forward to the comments and my motion stands to have the staff direct approval of all school plans, whether or not that masking is voluntary or mandatory, we want it to be voluntary.
Um, I'd like to clarify, uh, Commissioner McKinney, that one of the reasons that this was tabled at our last meeting was if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Lindy, uh, knew that there were going to be, uh, further direction coming from the governor's office. And so since our last meeting, there has been direction made. I think that that's a necessary component of this discussion, that there has been additional direction, which is now state law. And I think that I'd be happy to share if you'd like another member of our team to do so, but I think that does impact this discussion.
Mayor Byers?
Yes, thank you. So I'm going to first of all say that I, uh, am in total agreement with Commissioner McKinney in terms of what has happened, how this has become so political and why that's egregious in a lot of ways. Um, I think that, um, that it, it is subjective, objective, it really doesn't make any difference at this point to say, you know, that masking is mandatory because there really is a lack of scientific, uh, studies or data that support the real efficacy of masking in this situation. I have a concern about that. Um, I also think it's egregious that we have a governor who would take it upon himself to mandate a decision for our families, uh, on something, um, affecting our children who are the least at risk of receiving or caring. However, having said that, I will also say this, that, uh, it is now, um, we, I recognize that the, uh, health district is under the auspice of the state health, Board of Health and under the auspice of the governor. And that means under the auspice of the, um, emergency order. And at this point, under an emergency order, it has been mandated in the state of Washington. I don't agree with it, I do not. Uh, but I will not ask, um, our, uh, health district to jeopardize their position in terms of their jobs or personal liability, uh, to make a directive of that sort.
Uh, and if I may, I, I do, I did fail to thank the board for, uh, amending our budget. I'm grateful that that happened, thank you. Uh, one of the reasons that that's so important is that we want to live within our projected budget. Uh, and it's because we are in a dire situation. I think it's necessary, while this may be a conversation about masking, I think it's necessary to reiterate that we are in an emergency situation. We have dramatically high numbers in this county. We have six, uh, members of our community that have died in the last week from COVID. Uh, we have very high per hundred thousand rates. This is a dramatic circumstance. And at the same time, we are not in a lockdown. I know that there were public comments made that we are in a lockdown, I would not agree with that assertion. We, uh, do not have the six foot distancing in schools. Schools are allowed to have children. Uh, we have our restaurants and businesses open. We are in far, uh, better shape in terms of the restrictions that were so concerning for people. But we are in, by no means through this emergency, it is dramatic. And we are also finding ourselves with full emergency rooms. We have, uh, many, many, um, members of the medical community who are sick and, uh, not available at work. We have people who are being transferred out of this county. Uh, I would be remiss if I didn't share with you how serious the situation is. And I, um, happily have Dr. Bard acknowledge that or Melissa or Ryan, because these numbers are dramatic.
So thank you, Mr. Fresco, and I just want to say, I, I'm not disagreeing with that. I am disagreeing that, um, one person has the ability to make that decision when there are certain things that I believe ought to be the personal choice of the parents. And, uh, you know, considering all the other factors, that's the point I'm making. But, but again, I will not, um, I will not agree with the motion that directs, um, our, our health district to, uh, do something that would jeopardize, you know, your, your jobs, your positions or your personal liability.
A motion was made, is there a second?
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion?
Uh, Commissioner Anderson, that, uh, you know, standard precipice here where we're really talking about mandating, uh, actions of people on behalf of the public's interest or the state's interest against our own personal liberties. That is a dangerous precedent to set. If we're going to start setting those precedents, I just wonder who is the arbitrator of the precedent? Uh, that is, that is a very important, critical thing to define. Uh, where do the lines stop? When are we going to, or are we going to reach a point where we mandate as we are of state employees or federal armed services, mandate them getting vaccines or mandating a healthcare procedure on somebody? That is a dangerous, dangerous, dangerous precedent to set. And I would just stand in, in, in the face of that and say, I think liberty is important. I think people's individual choices supersede that of the state. And I guess that's why I call myself a patriotic American. However, uh, I worry that not everybody shares my opinion there. And I do understand the public health interest here. I just want to know where does that line stop? Where do we stop making personal choices about our own healthcare? And when do we, where, where do we start making choices on the benefit of the state? So, uh, it's a dangerous situation we find ourselves in. Although I'm not asking the health department to break the law. I'm simply suggesting to them that we should give it to this individual school districts who will very likely vote to mandate their masks. But we should at least give them the option to do so in case there's enough people that feel strongly enough that we shouldn't do that. Maybe there's a majority in some of these districts that feel that we shouldn't have mask mandates. Shouldn't those people be heard as well? Shouldn't those people's voices not be squashed out by the state? I would render that as an absolute yes. We should listen to minority opinions, even if they're not always popular.
Doctor Haddaberry, I'd like.
I was not, I, I don't disagree with you because I am a patriot as well, I see myself that way. I strongly believe in liberty. My question lies with, with the governors, um, under the emergency order. Are we asking, if we move ahead with this motion, are we asking the members of the health district to, uh, to violate the law? Mr. Elliott, can you help us here?
We're getting some feedback, if you're, uh, not going to speak, please, uh, mute.
Well, Mayor Byers, Mayor Byers, to answer your question, I mean, I think everybody here has taken a look at the Department of Health guidelines from July twenty-eighth. You've seen what's listed in there, you've seen what's described. The governor issued his order on, um, July thirtieth, I believe, identifying that he stated to prohibit any public private charter school provides education, any grade level from kindergarten through twelve for providing in-person learning unless the school complies with the Department of Health requirements. I mean, I, those two things have been spoken. The DOH guidelines are requirements. I think the word requirement is used in there at least sixteen pages in the first two pages. I mean, essentially what you have here is you have instruction both from the governor of the state and the Department of Health. And those members, both Dr. Bard as the health officer, the administrator officer, uh, Director Fresco have an obligation to follow the obligations and requirements of the rules of Board of Health, as well as those identified rules. So if you're asking me if they are being told to do something different and then they choose to do something different, they're obviously putting themselves in a bad spot, yes. Um, I know, uh, Councilwoman DeValle often brings back the powers and duties of this board and the requirements that are in there, and she may do so again tonight under seventy oh five oh six oh. The requirements of this board's job is to enforce through the health officer and/or the administrative officer those rules, et cetera. So I, I, I think it's pretty plain in terms of what the requirements are. Um, whether all of us like it or not, it's a different story. Um, and a difficult choice. I know as a parent of a child who's going back to school, it's going to be hard to put a mask back on my eighteen-year-old autistic son. I don't look forward to the idea. Um, I think a lot of these things have been a challenge for a lot of people. Um, but for me, something that's come to mind recently as I've thought about all this stuff and trying to put it all in perspective, I think of, uh, a verse in scripture, "If anyone forces you to go one mile, go with them two miles," says the Lord, Matthew five forty-one. It's a struggle, it's a challenge. Um, but for me, I guess that's where I'm camping on. But to answer your question there, I think guidelines are what they are, the obligations on the health officer and our director are what they are, and they are on this board for what they are as well.
I appreciate that input, um, James, and I, I think that just popped something in my head when you read that scripture. And, and when I think about the reason why we're here is again, because Governor Inslee has an emergency order, uh, in place. And we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for this single authoritarian rule that we have. When these statutes were created that govern even our health district, our health board, no one ever imagined that we would be giving over very uniquely and contrary to the values of our constitution so much to one person to have control over our daily lives. And so if, I'm happy to go two miles with Jay Inslee. And if the second mile is on the way to the courthouse, I think it's time we start to see some challenges. So I'll walk the second mile to the courthouse with Jay Inslee. Uh, I think that there are parents out here who are desperate for a choice. They want to know that they're supported, this is not unique. If you don't think that there are health boards across the United States who've done what we can do tonight in the face of being challenged in court, they've done it. There are school boards out there who've done it. There are senators, there are representatives in state houses and in our nation's capitals who have dared to say, "You will not control us anymore." So the moral fortitude lies in all of us. And this is one way that we can show that we can take a stand and say enough is enough with this emergency order and your ability to do things like mandate healthcare workers who've been on the front lines for eighteen months to take a vaccine after they have chosen not to get it, and they are picketing this moment in front of Memorial Hospital because they have saved lives in the face of COVID. And our governor thinks he knows better than the nurses and doctors who refuse the vaccine because of whatever reason they've had, which is their personal choice, he knows best. No, he does not, so I'll walk the second mile.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Lindy.
Yes, uh, thank you. I just, um, I appreciate all the comments have been, been given tonight. And I, you know, I am, as I read through the, um, the letters or emails from so many of our parents tonight, um, I, I thought they, they made very valid points. I am very concerned about the fact that the governor has, uh, chosen once again to, um, you know, exert his authority in this way. And it reminds me of something that happened to, to, to us as parents many years ago. And we would ask of each year our principal in our elementary school for a certain teacher because we felt that that was the best teacher for our kids. And it was a struggle every year. We eventually got our way, but the, the fact was this, that we were told that we had to, to listen, you know, she, the, the principal would tell me that she was the expert in the field. And of course, yes, uh, she was the expert in the field of education, but I was the expert with, with our children. And so I don't want to discount, you know, the, the, uh, the opinions that are brought forth, there are a lot of valid points. Uh, when we look at, uh, and, and I'd also don't want to turn a blind eye to the fact that we do have cases rising in the county right now, we do have cases, uh, that have increased greatly as far as our hospitalizations are concerned. I don't think we can ignore that. But, uh, to say that the mask is, is the answer, I just simply disagree with. When we look at, and I've talked to medical professionals about this, when you look at things that are effective in disease pre- prevention and control, they don't bring the mask up first. What's brought up first are things that have already been spoken about, which is thorough and regular hand washing, the idea that social distancing can be of value, the idea that temperature checks can be of value. So I would rather see the schools have the option of going that route instead of just simply saying, "Let's put a mask on everybody." And, and frankly, this is kind of a concern of mine with the governor from the very beginning, which is not just about our schools, about our businesses and our churches, which is, it's easy enough for him to say no and ban something. And meanwhile, education is, is damaged, businesses and livelihoods are damaged. I would much rather say, "What's the way to get to yes?" You know, we can have businesses open, we can have churches open, let's just follow certain common sense guidelines. And I would like to see the same thing here. I do also, I, I do also respect Mr. Elliott's opinion and Mayor Byers' opinion that I don't want to put the health board in a position where they are, are might be found, find working contrary to the law and put them at risk there. But I, um, I do think that we need to make a statement. And, and, uh, you know, depending on how this motion ends up going, I, I have an alternative to offer, uh, may, depending on how this result goes, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, any other, uh, comment?
Yes, I haven't had a chance to speak yet. Um, uh, so I'm gonna be speaking against the motion. Um, if you guys haven't already read it, I just want to read it into the record. Um, the OSPI superintendent Chris Reichdell, he sent out a memo to all school directors and superintendents. This was on July twenty-ninth. And, um, there's some numbers in there, some points that he made, and I'm just gonna read a few parts of it. So number six of his letter says, "Boards or districts that intentionally disobey, dismiss or shun an explicit law, including the governor's executive order, which has the power of law, will see an immediate halt to their basic education appointment, appropriation and their federal funds that come through OSPI." So I just remember and recall, you know, earlier this year during my time in this board, we were all looking for ways to get back to school. And I don't want to jeopardize that. And I don't want to jeopardize schools getting closed, um, because we want the Board of Health to convey that masks are voluntary. This obviously, this, um, mandate obviously says it's not. Another part that I want to read into the record is another paragraph towards the end of his letter, which says, "Community actions that result in board actions that violate the law, including executive orders, will jeopardize school budgets, local school personnel, and ultimately the opening of school in-person learning this fall. Individuals who violate the mask order or other layered mitigation strategies not only carry individual legal risks, but they also risk cases and outbreaks in schools that will warrant quarantines, school building closures and disruptions in high-quality in-person learning." And before our meeting today, uh, Mr. Iback did send us a school data email with the numbers. So I just want to point out that in the last two weeks from July twenty-eighth to August So I just want to point out that in the last two weeks, from July 28th to August 10th, 14% of all positive cases have been school-aged kids. That's 160 sick kids, 60 sick kids that could have potentially been in school with COVID. Now, masks are preventative. You know, masks are there to prevent the spread of COVID. So I want to prevent case outbreaks, prevent kids from getting sent home to quarantine for weeks at a time and not being able to be at school. I want to prevent school closures, and I want to prevent classroom closures. And you can do that all by wearing your mask. I'm not saying that it's not going to happen, but masks will help. So that's why I'm speaking against your motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVal. And I do appreciate you reading that letter from the director of OSPI because it, it's running to what we've seen, which is, boy, what other way to make sure you're, when you're making a mandate to threaten, to write a letter so threatening to tell people, "If you dare to challenge us, we will come after you. The state will come after you individually." What a threat. And that is what we cannot allow. The threat of the state coming down on individuals exercising liberty in our United States. This is truly unprecedented. And for anyone who doesn't realize it...
I, I disagree. You know, this is not about questions, not about any of that. This is about schools not wanting to take on the liability. So I, I just disagree.
Mayor Byers, did you have more? I was going to share, but I didn't know if you, your hand was up.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much for acknowledging that. So I want to say also that I really don't believe there's a lot of personal efficacy for masking. I do believe there is for our history of distancing and handwashing and other things that have been effective in preventing flu and other things in the past. But that's beside the point. The point is that, you know, no matter how we decide on the motion tonight, I want to encourage people to continue to take a stand, to be a voice, not just with the Board of Health, but with your legislators, with the governor's office, with your school board, everywhere you can to be present and to be a voice for those things that, that, you know, are really important to you. You know, this is one avenue through, through the Board of Health, but there's a lot of other avenues as well. I read through all the emails, and I just wanted to say, gosh, send this to the governor's office as well. Send this to the state Board of Health. Send this to your local legislators. Send this to, you know, every opportunity you have to be a voice and, and take a stand. So thank you.
Ryan.
Yeah, I would, I'd just like to say that this is not the Board of County Commissioners. This is not the Tophes City Council. This is not the Yakima City Council. This is the Board of Health. Six people have died in Yakima County in the last week. More than 46 people have been hospitalized. But this Board of Health is not talking about that. This Board of Health is talking about wearing masks. It'd be nice if we can get to the business of preventing, of talking about how, what we can do to prevent deaths and prevent hospitalizations. I just want to ask every, all board members just keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson, I was hoping to just share that I understand the issue of personal liberty is very important. We have a history in this country as a society of limiting certain things for the betterment of all. One of the things that we're talking about is the spread of a dangerous communicable disease. We continue to have discussions at this board about choice, but we have many people who are not vaccinated in this community. This community would be far better served if more people were vaccinated. We would be a safer community. And when we talk about challenging the Board of Health, I'm very concerned. The very fact that we have a motion that's been seconded that would violate state law concerns me. I have no problem with people having a voice. I have no problem with people advocating. But this board is not the place for that because we do not control the choices that are made by OSPI. We do not control the choices made by the state. We follow the law. And my concern is that we're spending so much time talking about what we don't like. They were ignoring the fact that this continues to be a dangerous disease, living, you know, healthy and well in our community. I would absolutely love to be past these discussions, but we are in a very dangerous time. As Ryan mentioned, people have died because of COVID. We have people becoming very sick because of COVID. We are not a safe community. And I think that it's, it's a privilege to talk about what we don't like when we've spent since December arguing or dissenting from following best practices. Our goal at the Health District is not to position our own personal beliefs. It's to protect this community's health. And I ask all of you to support us in doing that.
Director Fresco, you are implying that the only threat to public health is COVID. And I think we've had many discussions. I think it's entirely dismissive. We have been talking at this health board about all the other side effects of these restrictions and these mandates. And when you say we're not there yet, we had a governor who said that if we hit 70% vaccination rate in our community, in our state, that we were gonna beat COVID. But you know what? Those goalposts keep changing, and now we're getting mandates because our governor says that we need every single Washingtonian, 100%, needs to get COVID. And so if we flip a switch and that happens overnight, what happens to our borders? We have state borders. What happens across the nation? Are we gonna, the next step is our kids? So we have 22% in Yakima County, age 12 to 17, who are vaccinated, 35% across the state, 12 to 17, who are vaccinated. Clearly, parents are taking some time to discern whether or not this vaccine is something they want for their children. Do you think the next step logically is to mandate that our children are going to be vaccinated while it's still experimental? I happen to think logically about what the next steps are. We were promised, if we masked up to open up, then we got to the point where the vaccine was here, that once you had the choice to choose to get the vaccine, everybody could go back to the way it was. But no, that's not the case. And so, yes, I do question all of it. I question everything that impacts the mental health and well-being, the physical health, the stress that is put on people. And you cannot tell me right now, knowing that there are medical people and first responders in our own community who've made a choice that we have said, according to you as director of our Health District, they're making the wrong choice. We're not a safe community.
Are, are you saying... Are you, no, I, I just have to say something. I'm sorry, you know, I think that, you know, you're wrong to imply that he's saying that COVID is the only problem facing us right now. COVID is the only thing that we have been able to talk about right now. All these meetings, because, you know, it's taken up a lot of time. But there are other themes that we need to get to, other business that we need to handle. We're the Board of Health, and we need, we're talking about public health, is the health of the community. And, and hopefully we can get to that when we stop taking up motions that are against the law, when, and when we start actually taking care of business.
The reason why we're talking about it so much, Ms. DeVal, is because we've injected ourselves into people's daily personal decisions. We wouldn't, we haven't been making these decisions historically as a health board, and yet here we are. So we didn't get to talk about what people are going to do when they go to the doctor's appointment, when, when their checkups were, what vaccines they were going to get, whether or not they were going to wear a mask when they went to work or in a doctor's office. We didn't get involved in people's lives like we are right now. So yeah, that's why we're talking about it a lot. I would love to not talk about COVID. And if we could have a removal of every single mandate on personal freedom and liberty when it comes to whether or not to wear a mask, wash your hands, get a vaccine, I think we could accomplish a lot if we return to allowing people to choose every day what's best for them and worry about the things that I agree we can focus on and have an impact on.
I'm going to call for the question.
Ryan, would you?
Ryan, would you please?
I'm sorry, I was waiting for a second. Okay. So the motion as stated on the agenda is what we'll be voting on. If you're in favor of the motion, please state yes. If not, please state no. Commissioner McKinney.
Yes.
Mr. Lindy.
No.
Mayor Byers.
No.
Councilmember DeVal.
No.
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson.
No.
So the motion has two yeses, four noes.
Thank you much. We'll move on to item C.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
But before we move on, I, I, I would like to present an alternative motion.
Oh, yes. Thank you for reminding.
Please. Okay. I actually, it's, it's just a little bit lengthy, so I just forwarded it to Ryan Iback, and I'm wondering if he could forward it to the members of the board, please.
Commissioner Lindy, I'm, I'm going to ask a favor if you're intending for a motion that you would state it for the public.
I will do that. I will do that right now, but I, I just wanted to let Ryan know that it was on the way to him as well.
Thank you.
So I'd like to move that. Whereas evidence regarding the efficacy of masks in disease prevention is mixed at best, that other methods of disease prevention, such as distancing, handwashing, and temperature checks, have shown to be more effective, that the wearing of masks is detrimental to the education process, particularly in areas of language learning and expression, and detrimental to children's emotional health, and that other states and nations have been able to hold school in person successfully without masks. Therefore, be it resolved that we as the Yakima Board of Health urge Governor Inslee to reverse his decision regarding mandatory mask-wearing by students and staff, allowing this to be voluntary, and encourage school districts to employ other methods of disease protection and prevention, such as health assessments by students and parents, asking students to stay at home if they are ill, frequent handwashing, distancing of three feet, and temperature checks. I, and I send this forward to, to say that, you know, I'm, I'm careful about where the, the law of, you know, where our authority is within the law, but I don't see why we can't actually urge the governor to take other methods to protect the students. I'm not trying to put a blind eye to the fact that cases are going up right now, but it's, but masking is not the answer. I don't think it's even the best answer to help, to help mitigate or control this. We also know that the students are at little risk. I'm not going to say no risk, but they're at little risk in this case. And so this would strike a balance between the needs of the population, but also the needs of our students, students.
Second the motion.
Point of, point of order. On a new motion, according to the rules, you have to wait until the next board meeting?
Correct.
Unless we deem it's an emergency, remember, so I would, I would make a motion that this is an emergency. Or I think we decided we could just reach consensus. So if you think it's an emergency, do we nod or thumbs up?
I think that we need time to digest it. I can't even remember the whole motion at this point. I think that it needs to be placed on the agenda, and we need to receive public comment from it. It's not time to, to take that up right now.
There's quite a bit of subjective information in this motion. And I'm not sure what the emergency is.
Ryan, I, I'm sorry. Are you, are you directing the board on how to make their motion, or?
I'm, I'm asking if we are, if we're following point of order.
The process has been that when a motion is made like this, that unless it's deemed to be an emergency, that it be placed on the next agenda for consideration. So that the board members can, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. So that the board members can digest what has been presented.
Has, has everybody received the motion yet?
I, I have sent it. I'm sorry, I've sent it to all the board members. I can, I'll send it to staff right now.
Can you put it on the main screen, the other computer screen you can see?
Commissioner Lindy, I'd like to ask.
Regarding Ryan's comment about not seeing the emergency, certainly that's subjective to you, sir, and I think it's the board who gets to decide whether or not it's an emergency.
No, it actually, it's, it's our chair. So he's stated his point.
Commissioner Lindy, I'd like to ask to clarify, if I understand correctly, you're urging this motion on behalf of the Board of Health and not the staff at the Health District, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Because I did want to share a, a concern that I have. I think that this has become an issue of contention that there are restrictions that people don't like. What we are attempting to do at the Health District is support our schools and allowing children to be in person. We are doing everything in our power to ensure that people have options in a public and private school setting. My concern, and I'll just speak very clearly, that if our numbers continue to rise, if more people die, if people are intubated or in the emergency room, or if our emergency rooms continue to be full, we may well see more restrictions. So I'm sharing with you very honestly that this could be the beginning of a very bad time for us. So I, I don't feel in any way that we're trying to restrict children from learning. In fact, we're trying to use every option to keep them learning in a, in a supportive environment.
Well, Director Fresco, I appreciate that, and I am certainly on the same page as far as the students are concerned. We want our kids to be in school. We have been advocating for that for quite some time. However, and, and the motion does not say that we're turning a blind eye to the fact that we have a pandemic or a COVID issue right now. But we are saying, what affected the motion is to say that there are other ways to address this and still allow our children to be in person and have the most the best chance for having a good education. And we're telling it to the, and we're making a recommendation to the governor that he reverse course on this and allow flexibility at the local level.
I have a, a question for the maker of the motion. You know, it's, it's pretty lengthy, like you stated. And it seems like you put a lot of thought into it. We have stated in the past that if you want a motion or an item put on the agenda, you have up to 24 hours to add it so that we can amend the, the agenda. That way, we have time to, to read it, to understand it, to research it, and I don't think we were given that opportunity. So can you tell me when you drafted this motion, or did you do it during the meeting?
Well, I, I drafted it today when I was reading meetings. Looking at the...
And was it your intention to push this motion through today? Is that, was that your goal?
Well, I suppose so. That's what, that's why, that's why I offered it.
Even though you know that we passed a motion that we would take up new motions at our next meeting?
Well, I'm just, you know, this is up to the board whether they want to pursue it tonight or, or, or move it to the next, you know. But I think we need to pursue it. Yeah.
I, I would agree. I think we need to pursue this this evening. I think we have heard a great deal of information and subjective or objective, you know, from our constituency. I think they would like to hear something from the Board of Health and the Health District. I think this is a good way to let the governor know, you know, where we're at. And I think, you know, I, I don't find it that difficult to understand at all. So, but I do, I do understand, Ms. DeVal, your question about, does the board see this as something they want to, an emergency they want to act on this evening? And that's the question. I think that's before the, the board as a whole, or Mr. Anderson. I'm not sure who makes that decision.
Mayor Byers, I'd just like to clarify, if I may, what, if I understand correctly, Commissioner Lindy has put forth a motion that would be the recommendation from the Board of Health. And I'd like to make the distinction because you mentioned the Yakima Health District. I'm not in favor of restricting masking in schools. And so I'd like to make a distinction respectfully, that if the board chooses to support this, that that comes from the board, not the staff.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Ryan, would you take a roll call, please?
But, Anderson, I think we need to clarify whether or not the board is going to act on this tonight.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I should have explained that. I thought that was going to be what the roll call was.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead. Got it.
Commissioner Anderson, is this, is this something where we want legal, make, I want to make sure that we're following proper protocol. Do we need legal counsel for this, or?
Let's, let's ask Mr. Elliott.
Yeah, throw me right in the middle of it. I appreciate that. I, I remember it may have been two meetings ago, there was the discussion about what we do when a motion is brought up. There was a lot of discussion about that. There was a determination made. I don't remember the exact language of it. I remember a discussion between what the definition of an emergency is. It went back and forth. There was a lot there. I think where we came out was the expectation was if something new was going to come up, it'd be put on the agenda to allow others to have opportunity to be prepared. And I think there was the idea, unless an emergency comes up, and I remember a back and forth between at least a couple board members about what that means. So if you want my legal analysis, it is that this board determines that this is an emergency, and you need to decide... So if you want my legal analysis, it is if this board determines that this is an emergency and you need to decide this tonight, I think you can make that decision and vote as a board if you'd like. I would point out, Commissioner Lydian, I don't know if you saw, but Representative from Colfax, Joe Schmank, I think he sent his letter yesterday to the governor basically saying somewhat similar to what you're identifying, asking for the parent's choice or to provide local control was his focus. So some people view this as an emergency. Whether this board does or not, it is up to you to decide.
We need a motion to consider this emergency? Or can we just go forward, having had the motion received a second?
I think you would be on the safe side, that if this board wants to make a motion to determine that this is an emergent issue that needs to be decided, that'd probably be my recommendation, the appropriate course. That way, people can be identified where they stand on the position. That way, then you can go forward and move to the motion. That'd be my recommendation.
I would make a motion that this is an emergent issue and that we take up the point of order that we've just had, that we just had the motion read, and it can be reread after this vote.
And a motion, is there a second?
A second.
They're moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, part of my decision is that school in our city or our areas is supposed to start August the 24th to 25th. We want to get this into the governor's hands before school actually goes into session. I just think it's important to do that, and I think, you know, people know we want to do that.
I agree.
Any further discussion?
I just want to read for the record the definition of emergency. The definition, according to Merriam-Webster, is an unforeseen combination of circumstances or the resulting state that calls for immediate action, an urgent need for assistance or relief. So, you know, are you, by saying that this is an emergency, are we agreeing that the pandemic is an emergency?
Considering that our governor still has an emergency order, and that's the premise of the whole meeting that we're having here, I do think that we can state very, very, I'm pretty confident this is an emergency situation.
But, and.
All the questions?
Thank you. Ryan, would you take a roll, please?
Okay, if you're in favor of this motion being emergent, then please signify by saying yes, if not, by saying no. Mr. McKinney?
If you're not, if you're not speaking, please.
Yes.
Mayor Byers?
Yes.
Councilmember Duval?
No.
Dr. Atterberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is in favor, five to one.
Now, we'll go back to vote on the motion.
Yes, Commissioner Anderson, if you don't mind, I was hoping Ryan could read the motion again.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I move that, whereas evidence regarding the efficacy of masks and disease prevention is mixed at best, that other methods of disease prevention such as distancing, hand washing, and temperature checks have shown to be more effective, that the wearing of masks is detrimental to the education process, particularly in areas of language learning and expression, and detrimental to children's emotional health, and that other states and nations have been able to hold school in person successfully without masks. Therefore, be it resolved that we as the Yakima Board of Health urge Governor Inslee to reverse his decision regarding mandatory mask-wearing by students and staff, allowing this to be voluntary, and encourage school districts to employ other methods of disease protection and prevention, such as health assessments by students and parents, asking students to stay at home if they are ill, frequent hand washing, distancing of three feet, and temperature checks. And so if you're in favor of that motion, please signify by saying yes, if not, by saying no. Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lydian?
Yes.
Mayor Byers?
Yes.
Councilmember Duval?
No.
Dr. Atterberry?
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
And in favor, five to one.
Thank you all very much. We will now, let's move on to item C, and Melissa Sixberry.
Hey, I believe in our last Board of Health meeting, it was requested that we look into an audit between the Health District, the Coroner, and the three local hospitals for hospitalizations related to COVID-19, and if what the ability was that we, if we could even do this. One of the things that we found out from the Department of Health is that there really are no resources, given the increase in case counts. There's, there are, there's no resources at the state level. They're not going to put efforts into this. The funding is also, you know, where would we get the funding to do this? This is something that's going to cost thousands and thousands of dollars to do if we're looking for independent auditor. We also don't have access to all of the records, so the local health jurisdiction has access to medical records for notifying the conditions for their county residents only. So if our county residents went to any other hospital outside of our county, we can request those records, but for someone who went to Memorial that's not from our county, we have no rights to those, and that puts us at jeopardy for HIPAA violation. So there is no way to get accurate information. I think that that would, the resources could be used in other ways, and given the fact that our hospitalization rates are consistent statewide and nationally, I think there's always room for statistical error, but it shows that we are very consistent with what's being seen statewide and nationwide.
Thank you. Any comments?
Yeah, I'm just curious, how, how did it come about then that major hospital systems have already decided that this was something so important that they've concluded these? And so I think there, I've mentioned before, and it was a reason for my wanting to discuss this, is that there were two major hospitals in California who decided to look at their data themselves because they deemed it was really important, especially, and if I recall, it was in particular trying to understand hospitalizations for youth 18 and under, and that is how they were able to go back and correct their data to show that 43% were over-reported for hospitalizations for youth with COVID because they were hospitalized with COVID versus for or due to COVID. So if a major hospital system in California can do it, I'm just curious as to why we wouldn't be able to, and I feel very confident this board would be deemed it very necessary and prudent to spend the money to get it done. So how much would it cost?
Well, I think actually, we are not the hospital. We are the local health jurisdictions. You would have to ask Memorial, Sunnyside, and Toponish to do their own audit. That's the first difference there. And second of all, if you ask the administration level right now at Memorial, Dr. Barr would agree with me that the frontline staff we have working are putting efforts into saving lives. We have full ICU as of right now, not one ICU bed in this county right now. But we'll see if the hospital would like to do an audit, but it can't be done at the LHS level, unfortunately.
I think it's warranted of sending them a letter, letting them know this is something of interest, and we'd like for them to do that.
We have, and I'll let Dr. Barr speak to that, and Nathan Johnson as well.
Let me just give you one anecdote. One of the hospitals in the state of Washington had to fly somebody 600 miles to an ICU bed because there wasn't anything available close enough. So it's very high hospitalization rates with patients that have COVID, and it's displacing other patients with problems that are not COVID that need hospitalization.
And that is the reason why we don't want to request an audit?
Nathan, can you speak to what you spoke to Dr. Bruegmann about?
Yeah, I had a conversation with Dr. Bruegmann, who's the chief medical officer at Memorial, and he did mention that him and leadership at Memorial will look at any offer from the Health District that includes funding opportunities because their staff is, their staff's strapped, they're tired. Every staff that's working is working day in and day out on saving lives, and that's really the priority, not only across hospitals, she owns the county, but certainly throughout the country. So if the board were to create a proposal, we can certainly send that up to the hospitals, but I am not very optimistic that they have the time or resources to be able to do that.
And I would ask that, I mean, I understand the need for certainty in having data, but I would be concerned on spending taxpayer dollars for something that detracts from the emergency response. We have had six people die in the last week. We have full emergency rooms. Our numbers are skyrocketing. We do not have enough ambulances in this community. We are very concerned about the ability to transfer to other hospitals. And this, by the way, is in the middle of summer, when people are outdoors, and we are anticipating having very low numbers. This is before people go back to school. This is before the cold weather returns. This is before cold and flu season. This is a dramatic circumstance. We are in an emergency response. This is literally life and death again. My focus is on forward action that ensures the safety and security of our community, period.
I think I'd like to see the letter drafted, and I respect the fact that they're going to be able to address it when they have the time, but it is our responsibility to pursue the data, and with regard to response, how we respond is based off the data. So we need to know what the data is to determine if we need to pivot and respond differently.
But the data that we come up with will still not be 100% accurate. There has to be room for statistical error, which is what the data is showing right now, a low rate of 1.3% for Yakima County, which is consistent with every other hospital nationwide, which shows that our data is as accurate with room for statistical error.
Perhaps an opportunity, Commissioner McKinney, would be for us to share with you the criteria that hospitals share information with the State Department of Health, because it's actually the State Department of Health that sets the guidelines for that data submission, and each hospital is responsible to do that by law. So why don't we begin with that, because I think that it's perfectly reasonable for you to want to understand how the process works, because that is electronic health record transfer of information. And so I think that that may assist you in what you're looking at, which is ensuring the integrity of the process, which I think is very reasonable. So we can begin with that. I think that that could be helpful for you. I think that that could share how the criteria is made, and that is something that's perfectly reasonable, and I think that we could accomplish without causing concern from hospitals that are historically very protective of their information.
I do think it's reasonable, considering that our entire, when we were a region, almost didn't get to move forward because there was data that was incorrect going from the hospitals and the Department of Health. And to your credit, many people, Melissa and Andre, worked very hard to show that there was a significant problem with the data. So, you know, it pays to go back and be focused and look at it, and that is how we find errors. And knowing that we've had a significant issue in our area already, I think it makes sense to ask to look for one of the numbers.
So I will, I will say that of the over seven, you know, during that timeframe when we were being judged by or, you know, having our numbers looked at for hospitalization rates, I believe we just found less than a handful of cases that were in there wrong, and those were put into WAO Health, which is not where we pull our data from. We pull it from the Washington Disease Reporting System, which comes directly from the hospitals with the ICD-10 codes that match with the patient's name. So there's no room for error in that system. And also, I lost my train of thought on that, but I'd be happy to sit down and show you kind of the process so that you can see how that works. Because I think that once you see that process, you might be more comfortable with where our numbers at. That was the only thing I was going to say. We've had over 1,700 hospitalizations. We might come back that we have 1,650. We might come back that we have 1,800. I don't know that it's worth going through 1,700 medical records and thousands and thousands of hours and dollars to knock off a 1% or 2% of our hospitalization rates. I'm not sure.
We never, and I wasn't referring, Melissa, I understand statistical error, and I agree with you, there's some statistical error in everything. I was referring to the massive error that anyone at the Department of Health would have been able to determine that Walla Walla Hospital could not have possibly seen so many people hospitalized that our entire region was kept out of moving forward, but we don't need to go back there.
They were using WAO Health to do that, and that is one of the reasons why they switched to Washington Disease Reporting System to use our hospitalizations, because they recognized they were relying on input from an employee at a hospital versus ICD-10 codes that are electronically put in.
Commissioner McKinney, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to show how the public health system works in this state, and we can place emphasis on an explanation to the board about how that information is shared. I think that it's quite unique, and I think for those who are not involved in it, it would seem very foreign. So I think this is a great opportunity again to explain how that process works, and also to explain where the privilege lies for some of that research. As an example, State Department of Health has the privilege to review that information, and hospitals do, not public health departments. But we're happy to share that. I think that that's reasonable. Would you want that for the next board meeting, ma'am?
Yes, and I do think I like Nathan's suggestion of going ahead and sending the letter to the hospitals, requesting them to voluntarily do this and to give us an idea of what the cost might be.
I think in a more of an appropriate letter, after my conversation with Dr. Bruegmann, was an offer that illustrated funding sources and everything, because voluntarily doing this is, as Melissa mentioned, a lot of FTEs, a lot of full-time employees have been through hundreds and hundreds of records, and hospital systems just do not have the resources to accommodate that.
So Nathan, are you able to then connect and determine what possible resources, how much resources we're talking about and report back to the board?
I will make some calls.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Let's wrap this up and move on. Very good discussion, very good input. Thank you much. Let's move on now to new business. Under A is approval of the Yakima Health District's employee handbook by Ryan, Ryan presenting.
If I may, Ryan, before you begin, Jocelyn, I wonder if you could make the screen larger for people to read the agenda, if you don't mind. Thank you so much.
Okay, so about a year, a little over a year ago, we put together a handbook, a white CD employee handbook, that using the Yakima County handbook as a template, and this coincided with Workday, which is our payroll accounting, financial, HR system. And so we wanted to get that in place, to have that in that system when it started, went live in June. Over the last year, there've been additional changes or additions made to this handbook. And so at this point, we're ready to have the board approve the handbook. It has been reviewed by our attorney, and so now we want to approve or get your approval. And I did send it out to all the board members last Wednesday. We wanted, it is a lengthy document, so we wanted to make sure that plenty of time to review it. And so at this point, just open for discussion and a decision on whether we can improve that handbook tonight.
I do have a question, mostly just an editorial question, because it happened a couple of times. In the very first section, gosh, these pages aren't numbered. Anyway, under 1-3, non-harassment, and you get down to about the third line, and it says, "Race/Religion", is that supposed to be one phrase, or is that two separate words where there needs a comma?
Sounds like it needs a comma there.
Yeah, and there's another place where the exact same thing happens. So just for editorial purposes, if somebody will go through and correct those.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And I will say, well done. I actually read through the whole thing. I'm a person who does that. So thank you for sending that out already and giving us that opportunity.
I wish we had a prize for that. That's impressive. Thank you for your dedication.
Well, I am impressed with Mayor Byers, but I got to say, I also read the whole thing, so it's just, yeah, so there's two of us. And, you know, and spending time in both human resources and compliance, a lot of the, I spent a lot of time looking and reviewing policies, and frankly, I think the handbook is very well put together. I think it was a good effort, and I have no issues with it.
Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Who was, Dr. Atterberry?
Yes.
I think it was Mayor Byers. I'll second if you want to move, Dr. Atterberry.
They're moved and seconded, moved, been moved by Dr. Atterberry and seconded by Mayor Byers. Any further discussion?
I would just mention that, Ron, I've, I read as much of this employee handbook as I've read of every employee handbook I've ever had, and I will tell you.
Thank you.
All right, if no other discussion or comments, all those, Ryan, would you take a roll call, please?
Yeah, real quick, I just want to thank the Yakima County for providing the template. It saved us a lot of work. Yeah, real quick, I just want to thank the Yakima County for providing the template. It saved us a lot of work. Okay, if you're in favor of approving the handbook, signal five by saying yes. If not, no. Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mayor Byers?
Yes.
Councilmember Duval?
Yes.
Dr. Atterbury?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And six in favor, zero not in favor?
Thank you all very much. Next and last item is discussion regarding public comments by Director Fresco.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Anderson. And first, I do want to thank the board for approving our our handbook. And also, I do want to thank the staff. It's been a tremendous amount of work. It is the kind of thing that can appear tedious but necessary. So thank you all for your dedication in the middle of an emergency. The the last new business is a discussion regarding public comments. We thought it was appropriate to have this discussion because we are having longer meetings. But we also recognize that there are many, many, many public comments, and I think we were close to an hour at last meeting. I think we're close to half an hour this meeting. Your time is valuable to us. Staff time is important to us collectively, and there's a great deal of work to be done. So what I was hoping is that we could have a robust conversation about what the board would wish to do to ensure that we meet and exceed the expectations of public comment, of transparency, but also to ensure that we can spend time at our board meetings discussing pressing issues that are very credible, critical to the safety of the public. So I wanted to share some of the discussions that we've had and certainly look forward to Ryan and James weighing in because we've had those discussions. A couple of the options that we have are to continue as we are reading all of those. The other is the hybrid that you saw, which is us sending the comments in their entirety as long as they were appropriate to the board members. And then also, the idea was perhaps that we would place that on our website, share the information, acknowledge the 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 body of the of the comment, or the need, or the explanation of the comment with the person's name, but not read the entire comment. Because again, we have many, many, many comments. We're spending a great deal of time on those comments. We want them available to the public. We certainly want them available to the board. But I'd like to find a consensus that meets with your approval so that we can have more flexibility in the middle of a disaster.
Andre, I would just make one comment, and that is, I really like them being sent out ahead of time so that we could read them for those involved, or for those interested in in reading them on the board. I would also just suggest a potential add-on to that. And that is if they could be numbered so we could reference them. And then we could have, like, for instance, at the beginning of the meeting, any board member that wants to pull out comment number seven, eight, nine, and 12, and have those read in their entirety, we could have a little kind of proxy vote to bring up the ones that we felt were particularly poignant, or that 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 was an important point. Not that all the all the public's opinions aren't important, but on the getting all the public's opinions, we should publish those on the website so that they'd have access, free access, and everybody could read them just in the same way that we're reading them all. However, for time's sake, you know, prioritizing or queuing them so that we were reading particular queued ones, I think that's a decent idea.
I would, I would like to piggyback on Dr. Atterbury's comments, if I could. I think his his suggestion is a good one. I like the approach we had today of getting the getting those emails ahead of time so we could read them. The idea of summarizing them in the meeting to kind of reduce the time involved, but have that option that if if one of the board members felt that this, you know, something needed to be read in full, or emphasized it wasn't read, that we have that opportunity. And and the idea of putting it on the website, so the public has that right to see it as well. It seems like a good approach to me.
Thank you.
I would, I would like, excuse me, I would like to offer this, is that they be put on the webpage in full, and that the the name and the title or the gist of the of the letter be a be attached to those names, and those names be put on the list and included with our agenda.
I would agree with that. I I think, first of all, thank you for sending them all out ahead of time, because I I did spend a bit of my time today reading through all of them, and I appreciate that. I also know that when people take the time to voice their opinion, it's important that they know that we that we do hear that. So I think that encouraging the, you know, our Board of Health members to read through all of those when the email is sent to us ahead of time, so we're aware of that. I think that publishing all the letters, including the names, in the entirety of the letter on the website for people, the public to have available, is also very transparent and very good. Dr. Atterbury, I like your idea that they be numbered, so that we want to refer to one in particular. We can do that. As part of the summary, sometimes it's helpful if if there's a particular topic to indicate how many spoke for or how many spoke against that topic, or there was a third topic that one person addressed, kind of thing, you know, to kind of help in the summary, so.
The only thing I'd ask to clarify is I I recognize, I think, the intent behind saying that we should publish the entirety of the public comment. But I do want to reserve the right for us to curtail inappropriate language or threats of any sort from that with the direction from myself, Ryan, and James.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I agree. Director Fresco, I think that goes, hopefully, without saying, but we do need to say it. I liked the idea that that Mr. Elliott, being impartial, representing the Health District and the Health Board, was able to be the one to try to summarize. So I think that that's a good best practice. I do think it's important that we still take the time to read at least the summary of every comment that was submitted. I do agree numbering it would be very helpful. But I certainly don't want to ever get into a realm where we are only going to read aloud those comments that are selected by the Health Board members, because dissent is a powerful thing, and this board will evolve and change over time. And I I I for one appreciate listening to every comment, even if it differs from my own opinion. So I just want to make sure that we are not pulling ones that we agree or disagree with necessarily. I'd like to make sure we continue to read at least a summary and the name associated with every comment that is submitted.
Perhaps a a a response to that, Commissioner McKinney, is a recognition of the tenor of the comments, rather than pulling in a specific one. As an example, we've had many. We had one letter this this week, which was signed by, I believe, 63 people. We've had many who spoke out against masking at this. So I think maybe the concept is what we could be discussing as opposed to the individual either email or comment, so that we get to your point, ma'am, which is that we're not being selective only in one person's comments.
I just want everyone's chance to be heard.
I would agree, Commissioner McKinney, and I wasn't, when I said, you know, highlighting just the pros and cons, I wasn't suggesting that. Sometimes people simply like that piece of data. I think it's important to summarize every email. I agree with you on that. And if any commissioner or, excuse me, if any Board of Health member wants to emphasize something that was brought up in one of the emails, and using that numbering system would be helpful in having us identify what that is.
Can I ask in advance for your patience? Because again, we actually have a very large window for sharing public comment, which is why we wait until really the last moment that Ryan follows suit with James, and that has to be reviewed very quickly. So thank you for your understanding.
I have a question about public comment. Do the people need to state their full name and address for the Board of Health? Public comments, is that, is that something that's required? Because I know it is for.
I think Mr. Elliott needs to answer that.
Well, I I know, last time, Mayor, you asked me the legalities of public comment, what's required, et cetera. There's a lot of leeway here for any organization. As of now, there's no statutes that require any specifics. I did, I did note there is a House bill that's sitting there related to public comment that hasn't gone through yet. But as of now, there's a lot of leeway in terms of what the board can choose to do. There isn't legal requirements that are set by any bylaws that we have that say how certain things are supposed to be done. In fact, before March of last year, we'd have our meetings in person, and people would show up and make their comments. I know the city has made changes in terms of what you're doing. I know the county is allowing people to do online comments and live. All those options are available to you. I do know, Councilman Duval, there are some people who shoot emails who come in, and we had one today where a specific person is concerned about sharing their opinion about something and identifying their name for repercussions from a work standpoint. And I believe that this individual noted that in the email that was sent. So we have to be careful of that. I mean, you want to hear the voices. I think the idea of presenting them to you all in advance makes a lot of sense. Posting them online makes sense. Whether you want to keep reading portions of it is a lot of leeway here for you all on this, and no legal requirements on anything other than the idea of allowing the public to essentially have their voice, which is key, so.
I just, I would like, I'd like to be able to speak with them sometimes, like if I had any follow-up questions or if I wanted to get more information, it'd be helpful to have their full name, either their home address or their phone number. I know sometimes people do provide that. So maybe we can look into what the state law says on on what is required when public comment is submitted. Another practice that a lot of people follow is three minutes, which is about 390 words, and that can curtail really long public comments and having to summarize them. That way they can get their ideas and grievances aired out in in an efficient manner. And it's the same across the board. You know, sometimes we receive public comments that are a few sentences and some that are four pages long. So just having some consistency would help.
I think, I think one thing I would say, Councilman, is that on the emails that you receive, you at least have at a minimum the email address of the individual who provided the comment. So an opportunity is there for you to respond to them as you see it. You know, sometimes individuals don't want to put, especially their phone numbers, on an email that's going to go to other people for Dr. Atterbury's laughing. Good, I'm glad I got you to smile, Dave. So to a certain degree, that I I I would offer, if the emails are being produced to you, you have a way to communicate with them that direction. And and invite, maybe inviting them the opportunity to contact you might also be another opportunity, so.
Any other comments? I would like to offer a, that we publish them on the webpage in full, and that summaries be writ read at the meetings, and with no other restrictions on the addresses or length of them.
Would you include the numbering of the emails for the for the?
Yes, the numbering of the emails are all of the numbering of them.
Are you making a motion?
That was my question. Are you making?
I was, okay, I'll make it a motion.
I would second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. To post the, all the letters and emails on the webpage in full, and to have, read the summaries at the meetings with no other restrictions, and have the have them numbered as they are, as they come in. Any further comment?
Can I ask a clarification, Commissioner?
Yes.
In terms, when you say the summaries read in, essentially what I do is in reviewing them, I will highlight sections that are to be read into the record. Is that the summary that you're describing or something different?
No, that's that's.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I, Mayor Byers, you you identified earlier, I didn't highlight everything. It's difficult for me. I will tell all of you to try and pick out what's fair, what's not fair to highlight in these things. I know it's been difficult at different times. But if if you continue to trust me to do that, I'll do the best that I can. But I I want to make sure we're clear on what I'm supposed to be doing, so.
We'll say that I did not see any highlighting at all in the emails that were sent to me. There was no highlighted information, so I'm glad I read them ahead of time.
Those were, I asked Ryan to provide them to you in full format, so you knew exactly what everything was. I I thought that made the most sense, so that you could read it freely of anybody else's view and and sort of read into it as you would. So I, I mean, I thought that made the most sense as opposed to sending you my highlighted version, so.
If I, if I may, I'm just hoping for some support here. I was under the impression, and maybe I'm mistaken, that when you said you wanted us to explain what the the point of the of the actual public comment is, that's different than highlighting and reading, because we could end up, again, reading many, many, many comments. I'm I'm hoping that that's what we can avoid. Would you be okay with Mr. Elliott summarizing? I mean, if it's a pro mask email or if it's a concern about safety and security email? Because again, we could end up with 35, 40 minutes of comments again, even though we're intending to reduce that.
I think we're going to have to address that if we get there. I think this will help, because we're having Mr. Elliott summarize them. I think that I I trust him to take a look at the body of the emails and the contents and the number that have come in and make a decision on how to summarize each one to try to get the point across. But I I I know I've said this many times, I, we owe it. This is, this is our honor to serve. We must sit here and allow comment to be heard. And if it means we sit here for three hours, we sit here for three hours. And hopefully, again, we won't be in this spot for much longer.
You know, I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I I would concur with that.
And and I I was just gonna say, I agree as well. I I trust Mr. Elliott to, you know, to to summarize as he sees fit. And and of course, we've got the numbering system, which allows the opportunity for a pull out of a particular email. You know, and and, you know, we had, I guess, 30 comments tonight and took a little under 30 minutes. The last time, we had 36 comments, and it took us nearly an hour. So I would say that's progress. We got part of the matter and saved a little time.
I will, I will say that's just because I highlighted less this time, Commissioner. I, there was a large contingent of people last time who had a lot of things to say about masks, and I wanted to make sure they had an opportunity to say it, so.
It was actually 52, right, Ryan?
Yeah, 52 last time.
Oh, was it really?
Yeah, there were 52.
I don't know about precedent, but typically when that many people are fired up about something, rarely do they react well when you try to diminish their opportunity to speak. So we must provide the opportunity.
Yep, true.
All right, well, the motion's been made and seconded. Lots of discussion. Ryan, would you take a roll call?
Yes, all in favor of the motion, State? Yes, Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mayor Byers?
Yes.
Councilmember Duval?
Yes.
Dr. Atterbury?
I can't hear you, sir.
Yes.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Motion in favor, 6 to 0.
Okay, well, thank you much. That concludes our business for today.
I will. I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson, Mayor Byers had a question, I think.
Yes.
I don't have a question. I just, for new business on the next agenda, I think would be appropriate. One of the things I brought up that the last count, last, excuse me, Board of Health meeting as well, is the two-way communication between the Board of Health, the the Health District in in our county and the State Board of Health. And because I know that we get a lot of communication from them, I know there is there is communication feedback that needs to go back to the state. I asked for a clarification of, of, you know, how that happens and 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 can we have some content of what is being communicated to the State Board of Health? So I'd like some discussion around that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Anderson, may I just share? One more, one more hour added to our meeting, notwithstanding. I think we're ending on time with with room to spare, which is, which is new for us.
That depends on how long you talk.
You must have been talking to my family.
And what you say.
Yeah.
True, too.
Move to adjourn.
Now, I, can I just update you guys on what's going on in the community and at the hospital? Dr. Brueggerman shared with me the statistics for Memorial and for some stuff statewide. So they, as you all know, the the cases are skyrocketing, and we have a different situation now. The alpha strain, which was the strain that originally caused the outbreak, was really diminishing and prompted a lot of the removal of the restrictions that were made initially. But now Delta is a new ballgame. It's almost like we're starting over with a new problem. The only thing is, we have a vaccine. But now Delta is a new ballgame. It's almost like we're starting over with a new problem. The only thing is, we have a vaccine. What we need to do is change things at the front end, because once people get in the hospital, we have limited therapeutic interventions. So they more or less sink or swim on their own. So we know that there's a big increase. We also have reports nationwide that there are children being admitted. Uh, Dr. Bruegemann's data from the U S says two hundred and sixteen children a day are being admitted nationwide. The, um, point that's been made several times is the healthcare facilities in our county are being overwhelmed. Uh, not in small part because of the close of one of the major hospitals, regional. Um, we're running out of beds for critical care people in the entire state. The, uh, mechanism that was put in place at Harborview to find empty beds and direct people to that is being overwhelmed. They're getting like six hundred calls a day. Um, that's just for our state. The emergency room is busier than ever with three hundred patients a day and numerous patients being boarded because there aren't available beds in the hospital. Um, there's also been a hundred open positions that can't be filled at Memorial, and there are nurses retiring. So we don't really have the caregivers to keep the hospital fully staffed, and it's turning into ratios that are really not very helpful for the patients or the, the nurses. And employees are out with COVID as well. The big difference in Delta is that more people are infected from each infected person. It's almost twice, if not more, than the spread of the original COVID strain. So that's part of the reason things are surging so much. So if I can, uh, have everybody think about the ways to prevent spread, uh, any and all of those should be considered and employed. That's, uh, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you very much, and welcome to your first board meeting.
Yes, welcome, Dr. Berg.
It's nice to be able to listen.
Welcome, and I, I am pleased to hear that you just as though considered to be employed, implying personal choice. So I do appreciate that comment.
Move to adjourn.
To move to, is second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all. Bye now.
Take care.
Thank you.